I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Regional School Committee. Today is Tuesday, February 4th, and we are meeting in the Dover Sherborne Middle School Library. The time is now 6:31 PM. First on the agenda, we have Community Comments. We've provided a virtual link for those who wish to make a comment for whom it is not possible or preferred to attend in person. Are there any community comments?
Nope.
Nope? Excellent. Thanks. So next on the agenda, we have Superintendent Comments.
If it's okay with the committee, I'd like to have Esther go ahead so she can give us her updates.
So with Student Council, last time I did was the town meetings and we had a meeting a week ago about the town meetings to all team up and categorize the student input in an Excel or Google Sheet because we... This is by far the most student voice we've ever gotten for a while. Like, it's just lines and lines. Like, we separate them from Grade 9, Grade 10, Grade 11, and Grade 12. The most major concern out of all of them was cafeteria problems. For example, they wish to have like a lemonade water fountain or maybe pudding or healthier food sometimes. That also appeared quite often. And the water fountains, some of them were not functioning apparently. There was also concerns such as school Wi-Fi, which has been a classic because the students know the school for having horrible Wi-Fi all the time. Some students reported on the classes, for example, between CP and Honors being too like... The bridge between them is too large. Like, if you go from Honors to CP, you excel in CP, but if you go from CP to Honors, it's not doable. Like, they will not get a good grade. Others also wanted longer lunch periods and more junior privileges, as well as the timing with the flex. So during flex, basically you sign in before flex time ends, so there's a cutoff. And last year, we asked Mr. Amara to extend the cutoff to like 2:40 or 2:38. So students had time after their sixth period to grab their phones and just go into the flex they wanted. But that cutoff time is now six... No, it's 2:26, which is like during sixth period. So no one really had the time to like check on their phones, especially if the teacher put it in his cellphones. From Grade 9 specifically, the biggest concern was cafeteria, obviously. And they didn't enjoy their homework, but I don't think that's a... Yeah, mostly the water fountains, meeting work, and the cafeteria food. That was... That's always a big concern for everyone. However, 10th grade really didn't like the flex timing. And 11th grade wanted more privileges as juniors. They said... One of them said, "I definitely think it should be feasible to implement and extremely popular with the junior class, or I would like to see junior class get the privilege of having open flex block like the seniors have." So a lot of that from most of them. And then Grade 12, parking was a big issue because, one, they have to pay for parking and sometimes they could call down to the main office due to some issues, but I don't drive, so I'm not sure about that. And, oh, another major concern was the deadline week because before majors, Wednesdays are a red line. It's the red line, so they can only assign assessments on Wednesday. Afterwards, they cannot. But a lot of people from my... From sophomore year and junior year didn't really like that because they wanted the deadline to be before or earlier because usually what teachers like to do before a break or anything or a deadline, they like to put all of your tests in that one day. So everyone is very stressed out about that one day, even though it's not a big deal because it's like your last grade of the semester or less your primary terms. And that can bring your grade either down or low. And then, of course, the Wi-Fi. So those are the bigger concerns. And, yeah.
So do you have more specific recommendations for the cafeteria? Because I will say, we use a lot of fresh foods. I'm actually a little surprised because I see the variety. If we had more concrete things that I could share with, you know, the Director of Food Service, that would be helpful.
So usually, the cafeteria food, I think it has gotten better over the years. And not that many people, like right now... For the first time ever, I saw a vegetable sandwich and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, they finally like made one." But I really, like, they've made changes, but right now, I feel like the biggest change would be getting into the cafeteria because there's only like two doors available and the rest of them are all shut down. And everyone just like, it's condensed into one door. You have like 26 minutes to eat your food, 10 minutes you probably are getting your food, and then the other 10 you have to like...
So see, those specifics like that are helpful. Because we do run... There should be four doors open because you've got the two different serving lines.
But the thing is, I've noticed a lot of students, one of the doors has way more options, so they all just like go there, while the other door has like no students in line. So everyone is just like at the one where there's more options. So I was thinking, "Well, what if there were the same options on both sides?" So it's more equally spread. But also like, well, technically, one side of the cafeteria is mostly dedicated for pizza and stuff, and then the other side is like the weekly menu. I guess that's fine. And then the water filters are not great. They're very criticized in these forms, highly criticized.
The two in the cafeteria probably are oldest, but...
I think the cafeteria ones are really good, but some inside... Sorry. If I compared them with like the worst one inside the building, they're okay.
So what is the next step? What do you do with this information next? It'd be helpful for us to know.
Since we condensed everything, now we go to Mr. Amara and Mr. Smith. And we find like the biggest issues, for example, of the cafeteria, which has always been our number one flex, and junior privileges, and billing issues. And then we go to him or Mr. Amara, and then we ask him like, "Are any of these doable for you to like accomplish? Or are any of these like something you can take into consideration and doing? And we'll come with some type of agreement." Usually, we have subcommittees meeting up with different leaders of different categories. And we just go meet them individually and ask for their opinion on it and if we can see if they can do anything to improve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of work to condense that.
Yes, I'm caught up on the water filters. I work in a school as well, and the biggest problem is the sensors seem to kind of tap out after a while. So I don't know if it's that... If that's the issue or if kids are claiming the water isn't...
When I was a freshman year, there was this one water filter where... Water fountain where you would see like the filter status and it was always green and that was like the best water filter. But then, they all progressively got worse at the end. So I don't know what happened. It also doesn't taste. It tastes kind of metallic. Just personal opinion.
Maybe just changing the filter. Okay? Yeah? Well, thank you.
The sensor is, I think, right.
Can I ask one thing? So you got a really great response rate. How many students were surveyed?
The whole school was surveyed during... So what the... Because one of our concerts is the math teacher. So she talked with the other math teachers if they could take five minutes for us to fill out this form. So everyone in the whole grade, because they're required to take math. They all finished. They all did the forms, so like 600.
That's great.
20. I don't... Somewhere around there.
It's a great system for getting a high response rate.
We're still debating over if we should do actual town meetings or if we're like the face-to-face town meetings or if we're too late for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I add an item before we go to the Superintendent Report? This is related to student voice. And we were all... Regional School Committee members were invited to an event next Tuesday, February 11, in the Middle School Library. It's... 8th graders are presenting posters on climate solutions. It's a solutions fair. If we check our School Committee email, I think it came from Diane McCroby. And there's a link. If you're interested, you can see what window works in your schedule, if possible, and you could go to any of the blocks. But they also have guest speakers from MIT links, link to 12 Outreach Program. So that event is next Tuesday, February 11. Thanks. Yeah, thanks so much, Esther. Now, we'll continue with Superintendent Comments.
Okay, so just a few updates. As I know, you had several updates and presentations last week when we were together with three committees. So we are busy with formative evaluations at this time of the year. So we're halfway through the school year. So any of our educators who are non-professional status meeting in years one, two, or three are meeting with their evaluators to do some self-reflection on their progress towards their goals, on meeting the expectations in the educator rubric, and then getting feedback from their evaluators so that they can continue to grow and evolve in the next few months as we head towards June. I had an opportunity to attend the High School Faculty Meeting this morning, and I just want to commend the administrators of the faculty for running a great meeting. The first part of it was looking at an updated 504 form that the educators would complete to provide accommodations to students who need them. And it was an opportunity for all of the educators to look at it from their perspective, from the classroom perspective, and see if there needs to be tweaks in order for them to provide the feedback that would be helpful to the team that gets together, obviously, to benefit the students. And then the second half of it was the educators sharing the many great strategies that they use in the classroom, particularly around meeting the individual needs of kids, providing equitable access to the curriculum, and providing opportunities for students to reflect and grow and see their growth over time. So I appreciated that opportunity, nice breath of fresh air. Social media. So I had a conversation today with our Director of Guidance, Ellen Rowley, and our Director of Wellness at the Middle and High School. And so the work we've been talking at the middle school in terms of bringing in the speaker, I spoke about doing a panel discussion and then talking about community norms. It was interesting that without me discussing with them yet, those three ideas, they kind of put them on the table similar. So we're all kind of working in the same direction and then talked about the work that Reverend Hudson is doing around the anxious generation and how we can all team together. So more to come on that. And it's just great that there's so many different arms at Dover Sherborne coming together to support the same efforts. And last but not least, for those of you who have students at the middle school, you might have heard that we had a heat problem yesterday with one of our pipes. So Don could just give us an update, please, on...
Great. So it was actually, if you... This is a building that has unit vents. It's a separate unit in each class. So over the weekend, we had some... It's actually software issues that caused the boiler to stop, which started a chain reaction. So Sunday, we did have one of the coils let go. If you remember, that was our issue with the major flood here. Fortunate, there were... We were already on campus on Sunday and were able to quickly see what was happening and had service people in to take care of that. They came back to address some issues on Monday. And I think from all the pressure that was going on with all the changes that we had with the boiler, we actually had three more let go, but we were there, turned them off. So we do have four offline. They're being repaired on Saturday. And we were able to procure space heaters. So all those... We were fully back into operation as of today. Yesterday morning, I will say, was a little chaotic for the first period. By second period, we'd have everything figured out. So we thank the staff for their flexibility. And we took some rooms offline. We used the library, we used some other spaces. So at the end of the day, I think we got into an okay groove. And I will have to say, we had one of our educators up there running the shop vac on Monday. IT came on and helped us, so it was a team...
Don was running the shop vac in her high heels.
Yeah, Sunday and Monday. First of my workout clothes and then my dress clothes. You know, it's sort of like the exciting part. I don't mind doing some manual work every once in a while. But I think what will... We've replaced several of these coils. They are 20-plus years old. And it wasn't the best design. We're on that outside wall because a lot of them were on the outside walls. There's not enough insulation necessarily, so it's something that can happen. But now that we've replaced some, I think what we may do is keep a log, knowing which ones, we might do some preventative switching out this summer, knowing that we've got some other ones that probably are in the same. You know, to have so many happen all at once Monday morning was quite a spectacular thing. The only good thing is we are right there. You can turn the valve off, the water stops. It just... You gotta catch it. So that was our excitement for Monday morning. Sunday and Monday.
When we reviewed one of the budgetary items, it was the increase in premiums of insurance. There was no claim for insurance on this, right?
No, 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 no.
Okay, yeah, it doesn't mean it's actual.
No, we didn't have anything. I mean, it's... Yeah, nope. There was no damage to anything. The repairs wouldn't be part of the insurance anyway. So we were very fortunate that we were here on Sunday morning and it happened to catch it. And we were here because the boilers had stopped working, so...
What Monday does it come out of, like, just paying for that? Does it come out of...
We have a maintenance reserve in your budget, that pretty large number that we use all year long for emergency repairs. Or repairs in general, but we have an allocation for that knowing. And over the past several years, we've upped it a little bit because as the buildings are aging, we're having more things that we have to address. So you have it easy, you know, in the first 15, 18 years. And now we're at the point where, you know... And there's not... You can't replay... You can't pull out the whole universe. So it's really just changing the insides as you need to.
Gotcha. Thanks.
It's good that they still make replacement parts.
Oh, yeah, coils. Got four coils coming on Saturday.
Nice. Perfect. Thank you.
Well, well done. I... My 6th grader was chagrined to find out that they only missed part of the first period. It was all regular after that.
It was actually fun to be in the school because I was policing one of the... Because no one listens, so they overheaded us. So I was in some rooms that were... You know, and they're like, "Oh, where am I supposed to go? Oh, you're supposed to go here." So it was fun to see the kids. We had some late arrivals and some people changing. So I took a little tour around with a 7th grader. So it was... It's actually fun for me to sometimes be in the school, maybe not under those circumstances, but to interact and, you know, just sort of see the kids in action.
Well, and the educators always have a bag of tricks, right? So you're suddenly in the cap... In the library with 160 7th graders. And I think they were like right on it in terms of giving them enough freedom and flexibility so that they could enjoy the moment, but then also, you know, reeling them in and giving them some structure. So it was a team effort.
Yes. Not a way to start us, Monday morning, let me tell you.
Something to break up winter. Thank you, Don. And we're moving on now to financial reports, so...
So your warrant report, I think, is almost as short as possible, given that you met in mid-January. We did do a warrant today that Colleen has in her folder, but we will put that on the next one. And again, they're always available for review if anyone wants to sort of see the ins and outs of what we pay on a monthly basis. On your monthly report, luckily, there's not much in bold. The only new piece of information I have from you since when we met in January is that our auditors have been scheduled. They'll be joining us for the February vacation week to do their field work, which is a great time for them to be here because we are usually pretty accessible. And so they will get started and we will hopefully get that process wrapped up, you know, as quickly as we can. We usually present your audited financial statements no later than June. Part of it is just them getting all their work done and getting all the pieces of information that some of it's not necessarily has to come from us. So... But we will always have it done for you by June. Any questions on the monthly? I always think the monthly is good to sort of just reflect on as you're... As we're looking at the fiscal year '26 budget. Just if you see any variances, you hope that we've taken those into account in the budget. And I think we have in most cases. So that's... Know that whenever I look at updating the '26 budget, I'm constantly also looking at operations in '25 to make sure we've caught everything that we need to take into account for '26. So that does bring us to version 2.0. And your version 2.0 is always for the region. Always, the biggest piece is incorporating the governor's budget because you do budget for revenues. Any additional revenues that we get, obviously, offsets the town assessments. So you sort of have to look at it in a couple of pieces. The revenues don't do anything to change your operating budget, but they do have an impact on members' assessments because those are funds coming that they don't have to pay. And so typically, we always have some positive news to share when the governor's budget comes out. And I just highlighted that we traditionally have used the governor's budget for our placeholder for fiscal year '26. You know, different budgets are going to come out, the Senate, the House. But we have found, and it's been proven out all the years that I've been doing the budget, that that is a really good basis to land on. It doesn't typically ever go the opposite way. If anything, you know, we always see increases. So we feel like it's a really good place and we will not budge from that unless something earth-shattering happens. So the governor's budget, obviously, we get a slight increase in Chapter 70. Know that we are predominantly funded by our member towns because of their wealth factor. And so typically, the increase we see is what is in the budget for the minimum per pupil increase. So that... We're seeing about a 3% increase. Again, your foundation or your Chapter 70 also fluctuates with your enrollment. So we were down a few students, but we still picked up year to year. So we have about $93,000 that we can take off the members' assessments for Chapter 70. And then Chapter 71, I'll be honest with you, was always like... I'm not really sure how that works, but I never have... That's really not always the best number. I always feel like it is understated. And therefore, you always, when we get that first payment and we haven't gotten our first payment yet for fiscal year '25, I think they always... Again, they're having to make best guess because this is based off the prior year transportation. And if everyone hasn't filed their end-of-the-year reports, which I can't believe people don't follow deadlines, so they're pulling old numbers. So that always fluctuates a little bit. Supposedly, they're telling us it's in there at 95% reimbursement. I take that with a grain of salt because I've never seen it play out quite like that. So that is a number that hopefully, we're always on the low end of and not the high end, but we are picking up about $25,000. So with the governor's budget coming out and the fact that we've already utilized E&amp;D, because normally, version 2.0 is the first time we utilize E&amp;D. But to be as conservative as we could, the last version 1, we already used it. So I left it in there because once we get transportation, if we have a surplus, we'll be able to apply more E&amp;D to the budget. So I wanted to leave that as a placeholder. Don't have that information right now, but that could also be another way that we can decrease the town assessments. So that's the revenue side. On the expenditure side, this version 2.0 is typically when we bring forward any salary savings from known retirements. And so we do have several retirements that after February 1st have been confirmed. And so we're seeing a savings of $185,000. And those placements, know that our target replacement cost is around an M3, M4. Most of the staff members who retire from our district are definitely on the Step 15, depending on what lane they're in. So you are seeing quite a bit of savings from those experienced educators up to where we feel comfortable retiring. And it's always a huge help to us to keep our base sort of lower for the town. So we actually almost guarantee... We almost rely on that on an annual basis. And it's nice when it's sort of smooth from year to year. So that is a nice reduction in your budget, in your operating expense budget. And then Special Education had requested a .3 FTE for SLP. Through having a couple more months to look at their staffing and their caseload, they have decided they do not need that. So we're pulling it out of the budget. So that was something that was an add in version 1.0 that's becoming a subtraction from version 2.0. And then if you remember, in December, you approved some additional ratios and position... Ratio increases and positions in Appendix C. And that dollar amount was $8,000. So we're building that into the budget. So those are the three sort of areas that we have adjustments to bring forward tonight. It's still early for some of the other adjustments that may come forward, mainly healthcare. The healthcare increase will be approved on February 13. So it will be the day after we meet with the two towns. But at least at that point, I will know what's being proposed that we can talk about, but we won't be making any adjustments. And then we're continuing to look at sort of some miscellaneous expenses, our utilities. You know, we're still looking at some of the initiatives and what we need to do. So there are still adjustments that will come forward. We will bring those forward to you at your March meeting. So prior to your open hearing, you'll have... We'll do another presentation that looks like this, knowing that the PowerPoint that we've put together will be the version 3.0, but I'll have to share it with you before we do jump into the open hearing. I think at this point, the other piece on the revenue side, I forgot to highlight, and it's more important for the towns, is in the governor's budget, the minimum local contribution is also updated. And so if you look at your assessment calculation, you will see that dollar for dollar, the two towns are responsible for their minimum local contribution. And then after you take that... After you take off our revenues that we have from the outside, the minimum local contribution, what's left, it's what gets spread by the assessment percentage. Great. So minimum local contribution for this particular year, and again, it's based on multiple financial factors and enrollment, saw Dover have just a small increase year to year in their minimum local contribution. And Sherborne's seen a larger one. So if you look at the overall assessment, Dover now has a decrease year over year. Sherborne's went down, but not to the extent that Dover's did because they actually had a little bit more of a larger assessment for the minimum local contribution. So when I always say that can throw a wrench in things and we can't really know exactly in version 1.0 how that's going to play out, you can see sort of how it plays out in version 2.0. So it's at the end of the day, we have Dover's actually looking at almost a $40,000 reduction year over year and Sherborne's sitting at about an increase of 271. That's down from over 300 in version 1.0. So it's still good news. And they're looking at a 2.34% increase budget over budget. Whereas we're looking at an overall budget increase of 1.37. Again, remember, debt, the debt rolling off is really playing into this year's number. Any questions on that? And if you ever want more information on minimum local contribution, the foundation, there are all kinds of spreadsheets and such that I look at that I'm more than happy to share, but it's pretty complicated. If we were a larger school district and it was such a bigger piece of our sort of revenues, we'd probably spend a little more time on it. But as you can see, it's a fairly small portion. We are very reliant on our taxpayers here, which we're very grateful for. So that is something that is a little bit of a different perspective that we have than other school districts, right? Also included on your memo are all the dates. So next Wednesday night is our joint meeting to talk about the operating budget with both Dover Warrant and Sherborne Advisory. Also included in that evening is a presentation by our landscape architect on the turf replacements. So we are going to schedule that from 6:30 to 7:00. There will be a formal presentation on the project itself and an opportunity to ask any questions. And then we will roll right into the budget discussion. We're doing it on that same night so that we can get as many of our town finance members to hear the presentation, as well as we've invited the capital committees from both towns, so they might be more on virtual. But we're also planning to tape it so that we can have that to share because I think that's going to be an important PR piece for us. We were grateful to have Angie and Kevin join us on one of our steering committee meetings. on one of our steering committee meetings so they've seen a little bit more of what's coming and I'm working with activists to put together the final presentation. In fact, I have a meeting with them on Monday just to sort of go over. You know, we've had some strategies on how we think they can help us with the presentation. And they do this all the time. They've got great references. They're very knowledgeable about it, so hopefully, people will come with any questions. We allocated a half an hour. We asked them to do like a 10-minute presentation and then 20 minutes for questions and answers. I think one thing that the school committee probably needs to think about a little bit as well is there's been discussion at the town level for us to come up with some of our own funding for this. So we've preliminary talked, you know, with Angie and Mark about sort of possibilities. When we get the final cost estimate, which they're close to finalizing, we may be able to say there's some money that we'll carve out that the school committee will go after. And there's various ways that we can do that, be it sponsorship, which we've never done before, be it that we tap into some of our other reserves. So I think that will probably be an important piece of the financial equation to help us get this passed by both towns. But I think we have to just sort of wait and see what our total number is that we're looking at so that we can figure out what we, what we can assume to take care of and what we'll be asking the towns for. Just keep in mind, I think that this facility here is not just a high school athletic facility. This is used by the wider community, which I think is why we, the way we pick, we pick and choose what we've asked the towns for. As you know, we fully funded the bleachers and the press box. And we're looking to probably do the same with the tennis courts, but we felt like this was one, obviously, it's too large of a project for us to do. But there's value to that for both communities and how it's being utilized. So there was some strategy around that. We'll continue to talk about it. I'm sure we'll get questions about that from the towns. But I think it's very important for us to be as vocal as we can of the importance of this because more than likely, this will be a ballot vote as well as the funding from the two towns tends up to be borrowed. So it's, you know, we've got to make sure people know what we're doing. Thus, we'll have the presentation hopefully taped and continue to use all of you as sort of spokespeople for this initiative.
Can I ask one question? The, sorry, when we, when you were first talking about doing the turf fields, has there been any more discussion about using, is there a capacity for us to rent out the fields more to sort of?
Yeah, so by, with the upgrades and the upgrades mainly with the lighting too, that gives us more flexibility. I've been talking with the athletic department about what we could feasibly bring in. On revenue, we would definitely be more aggressive with our pricing and probably more open to who could use the field. We pretty much are limit our, our time right now to the youth sports and our own sports. So there could be other, we've got clubs that always ask, adult groups that always ask. So that could be something that we could plan for so that we have some kind of little kitty that we're building up for the next replacement because these don't have that long of a lifespan.
What is the lifespan?
Probably 10 to 12 years for the, for the turf. The track a little bit longer, but the turf is the main piece. But that doesn't have, you know, we take good care of ours, which is what's extended a little bit past. But that is sort of the useful, the normal useful life of a turf. So we probably do need to be more forward-thinking about that. As you know, the first go around was a complete gift. You know, it didn't cost the region anything for what we have, what we've been enjoying for the last 12 years.
Yeah, to who's the gift from?
It was, it was the boosters.
Okay.
And yeah, there was some significant fundraising that had gone on on their end that was able. Obviously, they also did it on their own. They did it on their own in that we, the region leased the land to them. They sort of did the construction, which sometimes can be done a little more inexpensively than if you're a municipality and have to do all the procurement and prevailing wages. And then gifted it back. But the main reason that they did that too, what are the caveats, was that the next go around, it's yours. Like, don't come asking for, you know, funds again because this is something we're doing now, but the region's going to take on responsibility going forward. Which I think is why we've addressed, we've taken our steps this far is because of that. But doesn't mean that we can't go to other sponsorships or such. But I think there's, we also have to take in consideration what we have here in a small town to draw upon and we, and how you want to be the appearance and, you know, how we want to have things presented out there on the field. So things to contemplate. But I feel like if we take some sum of money off of the balance and say the school committee will make it our goal to come up with that funding, that that should suffice. And then you guys can decide how we're going to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say for the, for the presentation, I know it's more budgetary, but like, I think it's great to say what was done prior to coming to the towns asking for this. That'll be a big deal. And then the change in technology, as far as that, for concussions and all that stuff, that'd be great for the towns in the presentation.
Yes, the pad, right, because we are adding the pad underneath.
Yeah, and then just keeping it like, like in kind, not changing it. And then showing pictures to the stakeholders of the current
Yes.
track condition.
And that was one of the things that we discussed.
I don't hope we didn't melt it today.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think that's important to them because picture's a thousand words. So if you have 10 minutes, a couple of pictures will get you more than you.
Yeah, we had some great discussion on our, on our call, strategies. And that was one thing that we, you know, wanted to do is actually show the current condition.
Are there any cost savings, given that we already have kind of a footprint in place versus building from scratch on an open field?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Right, and we're not changing the footprint at all. There was discussions about changing a few things. Goalpost, I'm like, yeah, no, we're going to keep it as is because no one's going to know the center of whatever, wherever it is, right?
Yeah.
The additional costs we have is that the last go around on the track was like, when you talk about paving, it was an overlay. We do have to tear it all up and put a new asphalt base because over time, that cracks and deteriorates. So that is an additional cost that we have for this renovation that we didn't have in the last one for the boosters. But it also means the next time, we won't have to do the asphalt. That's almost like in every other. And there's some things that we have pulled off, like netting and things that we can do on our own over time, not to increase the cost. And we're not replacing the goalposts. So we took things out of the project that we felt were not necessary. And some of the things that we could then bite off ourselves as time goes on. But to try to keep the costs as manageable as we could at the town level.
And then, sorry, I thought about it. And the other thing was like, if you want student buying, like when they talk about decals, then you can have students like, vote in based on budgetary, kind of like maybe what decals they would like on the field.
Are there any things like coverings that you can use to help extend the life? Are there like covers for the field?
No, it's not really, not really necessary. I think there's annual maintenance that you can do that we have done. And they've told us that, you know, our turf is for its ages and in good shape. So it's that little bit of money that you spend annually just to sort of have it, they call it like sort of cleaned and repelled it and, you know, don't, don't let some of the tears. Like, we've had a couple of things patched up. But if you're, if you keep on it, then that does give you a couple of extra years. But there is just some stuff that you can't, you know, it compresses. There, you know, there's a lot of science behind it. And we did not have the pad underneath. So this project that's being bid does actually has a pad underneath, which brings what Kevin said, the extra safety and health for, you know, falls on the turf. So it does give it extra protection. And we think that is something that's very important to do.
Thank you.
I just have a, just a clarification question. So in the packet, it says February 12th is our meeting, but on the agenda, it says February 14th.
That's the old, I think that was last year's.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's February 12, 2025. Good catch.
It is the 12th. And then remember, it's Wednesday, it's not our normal Tuesday.
Yeah, that's why I was.
That's because we're meeting with the town committees.
Yeah.
And it will be here.
Thank you.
Thanks. And actually, since we're on the topic of next week's meeting, is that run just like a school committee meeting?
Yeah, you'll call to order. Actually, all three committees will call themselves to order. It's a, you guys are pretty used to it's a joint meeting. There'll be three committees running all together. So we'll make the circle bigger. And the three chairs of the three committees will call their committees together and we'll proceed. We will do, I don't know if we've got to do it, the presentation. So we'll do a draft of your open hearing presentation, the best that we can. The numbers that we will discuss though, will be these version 2.0. Sometimes, depending on the timing, I'm able to bring forward additional adjustments for you guys right before that meeting, but we're not going to have anything to share. So we will be talking about these numbers, knowing that there could still be some additional tweaks before it goes to your vote in March.
So we'll collaborate between now and then.
Okay, perfect. Thanks so much. Okay. Next on the agenda, I think we have action items. And these may involve further discussion before calling for a vote. But we have under action items, approval of the district bullying prevention plan. This is our second read tonight. We had our last read just last week and a lot of rich discussion around that first read. But with the second read tonight, did you want to add something now or?
Sure, that's okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so as you know, last week, we talked about the, the education that we have in place to hopefully prevent some of the bullying that occurs. And then the ongoing training and updating of processes and protocols that we have going on for their administration. In fact, there's another training that many of our leaders will be attending on Thursday. That said, we're at the point where we do need to update the bullying and intervention plan, which you reviewed last week. It's a two, every two-year process. Kate McCarthy did take into account the feedback that she received from you. So you'll notice on the reporting form, there's now two different charts. One is to provide support to the victim or the target. And one is to provide supports and interventions to the aggressor to make sure that each is designated, the support and time and attention that they need. I did go through the protocol one more time just to make sure that on pages 14 to 15 of the actual plan, if you print it out, it does have a number of supports that are listed for the targets, including transferring classrooms, which would need to change in schedules, variations of different kind of support mechanisms. So one of the questions that came up at the Sherburne meeting, which we had just at 5:30, I thought was a good one, which is, what do parents see of all this? And so I explained that the whole plan is on the website. I'm not sure how many people, you know, have taken the time to find it or read it, but it is there and should bring, call attention to it, as well as a reporting form, a short version. So parents can fill that out, students can fill that out on behalf of themselves or others, teachers can fill that out. And then that launches the process of investigating it, which brings us to the longer form, which you're seeing again tonight. One of the other pieces of feedback was to make sure that the language is consistent throughout, making sure that the words we use are target and aggressor. The Sherburne School Committee did pick up on, in a couple of places that change hasn't been made. So they approved the bullying and prevention plan with the caveat that we finalized the transition of that terminology. So I would ask you to consider to do the same.
So may I have a motion to approve the second reading of the Sherburne?
Can I make any comments before that?
We do have discussion, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I was, you know, doing the same thing, kind of coming through, seeing where we could beef up our supports if possible. In section B in the ongoing professional development, I was, I wanted to suggest, you know, information on best practices for supporting targets of bullying as being sort of some of the ongoing professional development. I also think we should sort of strategize about how teachers are knowing what they know, when they know, and how they can be utilized in the classroom to create a safe, safe classroom feeling for kids who have been targeted. And, you know, and in the flow chart, so that was my, my, that was sort of on the professional development side. There are best practices that, you know, I looked at stopbullying.gov and there's plenty of best practices on there just to make sure we're following those consistently through our schools. And then in our flow chart, I don't know how widely the flow chart is used, you know, sort of just showing the, what happens when at the top. I thought that we could add in when the supports are offered to the target. So this is, this is all about, you know, investigation on the right or the right. So once it's been confirmed that the bullying did occur, you know, I think it's, I don't know how widely this flow chart is used, but it felt to me that we could add in after imposes consequences as outlined. So it's like the third, one, two, three levels down, principal designate investigates the complaint. Right about then, when they say imposes consequences is outlined in the student handbook, that's when I, I believe supports should be offered. And I don't know if that needs to be on this, but that was one suggestion for just making sure that, you know, parents are looking at this. They know when, when they should expect to have supports offered. And then my last question was about the survey that's done at least every four years, was done in 2015, 16. When's the last time? So I assume that's, that's been within most time period.
It's done every, every spring as part of the MCAS administration.
Okay, the bullying.
Yes, yes, part of the focal data, which is culture and climate. And there's questions in there that cover bullying.
Okay, that's great. And then how does that, how is that information then used?
So that information is provided to the building principals based on their, their building data. And they go over that with their student support teams to kind of comb through and look for patterns and then make adjustments based on training and interventions and those sorts of things.
Okay. Is that information the school committee ever sees? Or is that, that sort of as needed or is that just used internally?
It's as needed.
Okay.
Yeah.
As needed and just internally?
Yeah.
Okay. The last thing, we struck that paragraph about Dr. Elizabeth Englander as a consultant. What was the, are we, do we have a different consultant? Are we not using a consultant anymore? There was a big paragraph that was structured, yeah, the bottom. That we consult with Dr. Elizabeth Englander.
That was done, she was consulted with before my time. And that was done to kind of get the district up and running. And now that we have programs in place and systems in place, we don't use her anymore and just rely on people as needed. For example, I mentioned the trading that's happening on Thursday.
Right.
The sixth, yes.
Okay.
So we kind of pull as opposed to prescribing who that has to be in the document.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
No, good questions. So then that said, given that there's some additional feedback, I don't know if you all are in agreement with that, then I think we should table this till our next joint meeting.
Okay. I think we'll make a clean or two if we could just have the document.
So we'll just keep the current up on the website until we approve our next meeting?
Yeah, until April.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Colin. Anything else to add though while we're looking at the document? Yeah, sounds good. Excellent, thanks. So next we move on to consent items. And first, we have approval of the minutes from January 14th, 2025.
And you can do them all together.
Okay, go, all right. So then I'll read the others as well. We also have approval of the overnight field trip. As you can see, the DECA field trip, that is PDF. Losing sight of page numbers here, but most of the way down, you can see the DECA conference overnight, February 27th to March 1st. And lastly, approval of a gift from Children's Hospital to provide $1,500 to pay for medical coverage at the home football games.
That's an annual gift.
So if we lump these together, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 14th, the overnight field trip with DECA and the approval of the The overnight field trip with DECA and the approval of the gift from Children's Hospital.
Colin Burt?
Colin Burt, thank you. And may I have a second?
Democratic second.
Kevin Crowe, thanks. Okay. Any further discussion?
Just a question that I think I know the answer to.
Yeah.
Students involved in DECA, if um they're not able to afford the fee, they have other means.
Yes, there are scholarships available. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you for the reminder. Appreciate that. Um all in favor? It's unanimous. Thanks. Motion carries. Um informational items, the Dover Sherburne, I mean, the Dover School Committee meeting minutes are here from November nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Can let's see at the end of the packet. And that's it. Our next meeting will be held next Wednesday, February twelfth here at six thirty with a joint meeting with the uh finance committee. So we're good? Oh my gosh, you guys, I'm I'm not feeling well today, but I'm doing okay. All right. raspy voice. All right. Um so our meetings come to an end. It is now seven twenty two P M. May I have a motion to adjourn? Kevin Crowe, thank you, Kevin. And may I have a second?
Kate Potter, second.
Kate Potter, thank you, Kate. All right, excellent. All on paper. Perfect. Thank you. And we have seven twenty two.